Welcome to the thirty-second meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence your electronic devices. And if you're appearing today, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names for the commission reporter. Commissioners, let's move into the preliminary hearing. Agenda item number one, transfer application number one-nine dash one-five-five-eight-eight from HSK Investment. Please come forward, sir. Introduce yourself.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sam Chiu. I'm applying for the liquor license. Okay, we stand by.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Do you have question?
Who has the records? Ask him who has the record, the records, the transfer, if he has all the.
Do you have all the records for the transfer?
Do I have any, all the records?
Yeah.
Yeah, the financial, all of the previous records?
Yes.
You, you have all the books from the, from, from the transfer, uh?
Yeah, yeah, I do, yeah.
Okay, very, yeah, very good, thank you. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Motion to approve transfer application number one-nine dash one-five-five-eight-eight, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, transfer application number one-nine dash one-five-five-eight-eight is approved. Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number two, application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-five from R International Inc. Mr. Luke.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. To my right is the general manager, Takahaki Nakagawa. Spelling has been provided. With a record, reflect Wayne Liquor's concern. We have no changes to the investigators report. In this case, Renka has had a restaurant on Makalua Street for about the last ten, ten years and they're moving to this new premises.
Very good, thank you. Commissioners?
Uh, motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-five, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-five is approved. Mister Luke, remind your client, no music. We gotta go to one, right?
No, it didn't.
Thank you, thank you very much. Calling agenda item number three, application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-six from Jungle Bar LLC.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is James H. Lee, representing Jungle Bar. With me today is Mister Justin Alexander. Justin is J-U-S-T-I-N-A-L-A-X-A-N-D-R. We have no provisions to the room, investigator report.
Thank you, Mister Lee. Commissioner?
So question. Mister Alexander, you have in your, um, a kind of business quote. You plan on, um, your draw is the strongest and cheapest margarita in Waikiki.
Well, we are a, we're a restaurant. We have pizza, first of all. We wanna add, we're, wanna be known for pizza. We wanna be able to offer beers, wine, and margaritas. We wanna be known for here, pizza and margaritas.
Okay. I just thought that was an interesting statement on how that would be the strongest margaritas in Waikiki.
Well, I was trying to differentiate us from other places.
How so? I mean, it's.
Well, ju- ju- just with better value for, you know, better price, local price. We wanna be a little bit more on the local side when it comes to terms of pricing. You know, we, we're, we will have a lot of tourists, but we're targeting the local community.
So by having the best margaritas in town, does that mean you have more alcohol than you have mix?
They would be on the stronger side and on the cheaper side price-wise. Mostly reflected in the price.
More for your dollar.
Yes.
More for your bag.
Cause that's a problem with Waikiki, it's hard to, everything is so overpriced. We're more of a local spot, of our locals.
Yes, understanding that. But we have a responsibility to the general public to protect them from people that have consumed too much alcohol and stupidly have gotten into a motor vehicle. I don't think that's very good logo to put out to the general people.
I agree with, um, Chair. Um, as you know, there's, Waikiki is going through a whole safety plan for the tourists and as well as the people that are, um, in Waikiki. And I don't think that this type of draw for the strongest type of margarita, I don't wanna, I don't want people to be drinking one and being knocked out or, you know what I mean, like just not all there. So I think that you should, um, maybe revisit that issue.
No, I, definitely that can be revisited. Our, we're focused on our pizza too. We, we're not a, we're not even a bar. We're, we're always closed by eight-thirty, eight-thirty-nine, and we're just food truck location. And that's really our main draw, lunch and an early dinner. We don't stay openly. So that can definitely be revised. That wasn't my intention. My intention was different, but we will change that.
Because as I, let me reiterate, I'm concerned. So you're basically advertising and promoting to the general public that you can get impaired quicker and cheaper by drinking your margaritas. And that's what, should something happen, this commission could be brought in and face scrutiny by the media by saying, they told you that they were stronger and cheaper and you guys still granted demolitions. Where is the responsibility of the commission to make sure that somebody doesn't leave your establishment and kill some innocent person whether on the sidewalk or in a vehicle accident? That's, I, understanding that.
Right, I take that. I agree with you and that will be changed.
Thank you very much.
And also, is, is most of this space outside? Can I, can we please explain where the walls are for, as I'm looking at your floor plan?
Yes, so there's a wrought, uh, six-foot wrought iron fence that wraps around most of the property.
Okay, I see that.
And that, and then there, we are going to extend that fence. So there'll be one small area on the corner, which will be the main access point. Everything else is.
That's this right here?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this is the fence you're talking about?
This is wrought iron fence. It'll go down to the red line, all the way down.
Okay.
And then on the other side is a brick wall on the other side of the property. And then, of course, the house right there.
Okay, and this is the sidewalk?
That is the sidewalk. It's a corner lot.
Okay, so how big is the opening gonna be right here?
We're probably gonna have it about twelve feet, but.
But then, most of your, so this seating is all open air?
It's all open air.
Okay. I will remind you that noise can be a huge problem for some of the residents and also visitors in Waikiki that aren't looking to, you know, have people yelling and screaming.
Well, I know, we're not, we're not gonna have that. I know Jungle Bar, that was decided by my family before, but we're not even gonna be a bar. We're really, we want the option to sell, be able to sell beers, some margaritas with our food. And we close early. And we've been in operation for a couple of years now and we haven't had any major issues with the neighbors or any problems.
Okay.
So we're, we're not a bar, that's misleading. We really wanna be able to sell alcoholic drinks with the three different food trucks that are there.
I would encourage you to reach out to your neighbors and talk with them so that they can call you directly if they have any issues with.
We, I, I have spoken to some of the property owners and A O A Os and we reached out to them just, uh, and I haven't had any objections now. There have been some individuals, but so far we have.
Because if they don't, if they can't get ahold of you, they call us.
They, they, they can all get ahold of me.
Okay.
And let me, uh, one more last thing. I point your attention to exhibit C. Noise impact evaluation. Our investigators have rated your premises as poor. Be very mindful of that.
Yes, we're mindful of that and, you know, our music will be kept low. We're just gonna have music, general music, nothing, no live bands or no dancing.
Intoxicated people can get loud all on their own.
I'll remind.
You weren't.
One last question, just a clarification on the, um, the permits, um, on exhibit B. It looks like that you have an area that will be excluded, um, that may be within your outlined area. Is that correct? There's another food truck or something there that is not part of your premise?
That is correct.
Is, and where would that be on exhibit B?
It's marked.
This is what we, maybe we have.
So, yeah, it, is there an area there that is not included? Yeah, yeah, there, there are gonna be, there are two other food trucks. So only our food truck will have the selling the alcohol.
Yeah, if you could clarify that, right?
Yes, we'll, we'll clarify that.
Update that. The, the hula dog and the fire grills, they're only selling food. Yes.
The fire grill is you, right?
No, we are the pizza. That is another tenant, pizza.
And so where are you guys?
It is a U shape and we are next to the fire grills, uh, on the left side.
Yeah, picnic table, hula dog, and then there's a.
Are you by the, the public bathroom in the office storage?
Yes, we are close to that, yes.
Yeah, right across, yes.
We need an updated floor plan, so it needs to include the two.
Can I see your floor plan?
Sure.
It doesn't indicate where your establishment is really.
Yeah, I thought that you might be one of these fire grill.
That could be fire grill.
I thought that the fire grill is based there.
Yep. It also states there's only two food trucks.
Yeah.
In investigative report.
Okay.
We'll clarify that.
Mr. Lee, you do have the investigative report.
I do, yeah.
Okay, so I'm expecting you to make changes on investigative report that's inaccurate under right now.
Okay, we'll make the change.
So we're having a new floor plan. You're gonna indicate there's total of four food trucks?
No, just three, three, three.
Three, okay, so you're gonna give a new exhibit B, correct?
Three, two additions.
That's right. That's right.
And then clarifying, um, you don't need to change your statement on item four. You already attested that you're not gonna, you're gonna review your business plan. And I believe on page two, it says two food trucks, detailed premises, food truck, uh, pizza truck and hula dog.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you have, you have page two, yeah, okay.
I, I do have, yeah, I went through.
Refer to page two and then please make your changes on the record and revise so we have the correct information. Uh, last question, there's only one restroom?
Yes, there'll be one public restroom. There is a support kitchen there for the food trucks and there's a restroom there, but that's only for employees.
Okay, so the public restroom, it looks, there's only one stall on this one, right?
Yeah, there'll be one unisex.
Okay, how, about how much patrons do you have visiting the, this area currently right now?
Daily?
Daily.
Probably, uh, let's see, probably, between the two current. Ah, there, there, it could be between, I'd say a hundred fifty to three hundred depending.
Um, the other thing too, since you're the only one serving alcohol, I go buy a hula dog and then I wanna enjoy a margarita. Your stunning margarita. I stand back in line with you. How does, tell me your procedures from there. I'm a customer coming to order a margarita.
Right, so then our trailer is more, it, all three sides open up. So you would come, you would, you would order a hula dog, then you would order a margarita and you would, you would just, you could, while they're making your hula dog, you would have your margarita. And then they, hula dog delivers their, their dog. So they, usually they have someone run to the table that you're sitting and deliver. So then you would sit down at a table or at the truck. And then you would, when your dog is ready, they bring it out and your margarita is ready, we bring it to you.
So Mister Alex, Alexander, you missed one important point. You have three other vendors there with different food services. And I have a number, whatever, number two, you're gonna come deliver it to me, right? How do you distinguish that I'm eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one?
Whatever one you have to, you buy from the, the trailer that, where we're serving, then you have to show your ID there. So if you want a hula dog, you have to stand in two lines, and a margarita, you have to stand in two lines.
Right, so I'm talking specifically about your booth.
Right.
So when I stood in line for your booth, there was no ID process? I don't have a ban and I went to sit down, correct?
Yeah, but when you come to the, to order, you have to show your ID.
Okay, we missed that part. So I showed my ID. How does that still distinguish me?
But you, once you showed your ID, then we would serve you the alcohol.
Okay, you said you're gonna bring it to my table.
Well, not, not with the, the margarita, could, or the, the food tr- well, our trailer. You, you will, you'll pay and we'll make it and we'll give it to you right there.
Okay, so Mister Alexander, go to sit on my table, right? How does it distinguish me with my twenty-one-year-old, my eighteen, my nineteen-year-old? How does it distinguish to me or how do you know I'm the person that ordered the? With three hundred people going in there, how do you know I'm the one that's allowed to drink?
That, it, if someone orders for somebody else and they're serving them.
Yeah, so on a table five.
Right.
Have one drink, right?
Right.
How do you know Malama's not underage, Darren's not underage, and I'm doing this? What distinguishes me? Do I have a wristband? Do I have, I'm over twenty-one? What's happening here? This is really important.
Right.
Because it's very alarming. I'm asking you this and we don't have procedures and we have no clue how this is working.
Right. Well, we.
Mister Commissioner, I think we can advise this land, that I'm planning to put up a wristband on, on the.
Yes. Please. Yeah, please review what I've just said. We do this and let's talk about it again.
We will, and, and I'd like to say too, any other recommendations you have, um, we're, we're open for. We wanna implement. And we do want it to go right away.
Well, let me clarify one thing. We will not recommend anything to you. You're coming asking our permission to get a license. So you should have everything for us to look at, to approve so that we feel comfortable. It's not our responsibility, it's your responsibility. Our responsibility is to protect the general public from alcohol-related incidents. And looking at your, looking at your floor plan with all of these tables. If I will bring one eighteen-year-old with me, I'm gonna pick this one up here, way up here in the corner. Where once we get up there, you can't see what we're doing. That's what we're concerned with. These, this is the reality and the responsibility that you have as a licensee. So understand that.
Yeah, Mister Chair, yeah, that's clearly understood and we'll counsel.
Appreciate. Yeah, not, uh, it's not our position to give you advice.
That's correct.
Okay. This is a preliminary, uh, hearing, Commissioners. They will be coming back.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
All right, motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-six, second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-six is approved.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you and good luck. Let's call agenda item number four, application number one-nine dash one-five-eight-two-eight from Kuru Raku USA. Kuru Raku USA. How close was I?
I, I don't know. I have a translator to get.
Yes, Mister Luke, there's an extra U in there.
He's the translator, how do you?
Could that be a typo? Oh, Kuru Raku?
Yeah, Kuru.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you very much.
To, to my far right, Mr. Yozuki Ida, spelling has been provided. He will be the gen- general manager for the premises. Next to him is Kudua Okara. He is the president owner, but he will be counseling and operating with the licensee during the temporary license period. We have no other changes to the investigators report. The only thing we would request is that if granted, uh, we have the effective date April fifteenth. There are some visa problems.
Is that why Mister Seijiro Hiroyama is not here?
Yes, he's, uh, he's residing in Japan.
Yes.
Motion to approve temporary application number one-nine dash one-five-eight-two-eight with an effective date of April fifteenth, twenty nineteen, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor? Mister Luke, Mister Luke, can you give us an opportunity to approve it? Oh, just because it's moved in second, you're, it's first, uh, you know, we have some other commissioners here that may not, uh, follow through. Thank you so much, thank you.
I just shut my mouth.
Okay, agenda item number four, application number one-nine dash one-five-eight-two-eight is approved. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck. How rude.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Luke. Calling agenda item number five, application number one-nine dash one-five-nine-five-seven from Nui Ha Bakery Two.
Um, next to me is the President Peter Kim. He is president with council Wayne Luke. There are no changes in the schedule.
Thank you very much. And this is the old pineapple room?
Yes.
Yeah, very good. Nice to see something happening. Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve, um, temporary application number one-nine dash one-five-nine-five-seven, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, application number one-nine dash one-five-nine-five-seven is approved. Good luck, Mister Kim.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Calling agenda item number six, request number one-nine dash one-six-one-two-one from F S M B L L C. Your businesses pitch sports are, Mister Choi.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Happy Troy, manager of S M B.
Okay. Would you tell, would you like to tell your reasoning for asking?
By the record, clerical, uh, error in the application and usually they put, um, requests for refund if the, uh, if the events are canceled and this time they didn't. And we're only asking for refund because of the number of the events that got canceled would cause financial purchase problems.
Okay, very good. I see this, oh, I was nodding in agreement.
Mister Choi, we did go and there was nothing there. That's it, so. I cannot test to, we can witness that we.
We're expecting Mister Bukowski coming there.
Yeah, we, we did go and it, there was nothing there, so I can't.
They kinda used December as a measuring stick of how the event would go and then they made some changes in January.
And they didn't, um, update their, um, their website, so we drove and they were not open at all. So my goals are discipline, so I can't witness they were, we were there, right? Okay, uh, motion to approve request number one-nine dash one-six-one-two, second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Uh, with agenda item number six, request number one-nine dash one-six-one-two-one is approved. Calling agenda item number seven, request number one-nine dash one-six-one-two-nine from Makaha Valley LLC.
Please introduce yourself.
Um, Ed Sabala, Makaha Valley LLC.
Mister Sabala, I guess I'll start. Um, couple clarifications.
Actually, um, first question, um, did you get a chance to review the investigative report, report? No. You didn't get a chance to? Like a copy?
Yeah, hold on. Yeah, can you give that to, repeat that copy?
I'm like shared down about maybe to, um, speed up the process. You can.
I can start second.
Direct, you can direct your questions and you can follow. She'll tell you what page.
Yeah.
So to help you.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
Um, first and foremost, let's refer to exhibit A two, which is your floor plan.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, you're proposing to do an outdoor venue, which is to be a concert? And you're proposing to extend your license?
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
Okay, so.
We serve liquor in a bar anyway in a restaurant, but we just like extend it outdoors so the people can watch the show from outside the restaurant.
Um, let's, let's back, go backwards then. Let me go to this. You, you currently have events right now at your restaurant, yeah?
Yes, our first one was in January.
January, yeah, that was the Mimi and Elijah, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So you held that in your, inside of your restaurant?
No, outside.
Outside, but you had no liquor service?
What's that?
Did you have liquor service at that event?
Yeah, inside.
Inside of?
Yeah.
So given that event, that you had your license premises on the outside, how did that event go with just having one license premise?
Was good.
And your turnout for that was?
But, yeah, alcohol sales was, um, that was, that was a whole A Z then, um, yeah.
So, um, about how much do you think your crowd was inside and outside?
Inside at all drinker, probably five hundred?
Okay, total for in and out? And so you had procedures set up, how you manage your bar versus the unlicensed area of it? To stay in the bar versus coming outside, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so you had procedures set up for that, right, on two areas?
Yeah. Yeah.
Now you're proposing to take it outside, right?
Yeah, so now people can enjoy the show from outside the bar. If they're inside the bar, they cannot really see nothing.
Okay, so you're proposing according to your, um, exhibit A two, um, just to clarify certain things is that you're gonna be using, um, barricades?
Yeah.
So what type of barricades are you proposing?
The metal barricades, the ones that goes on the.
Tackle gates?
Yeah.
Okay, um, where, now that this entire license, this area, you're proposing for this area to be licensed, where is your entrance port, entrance point to enter into the concert venue?
On the right side of the stage. On the entrance of the parking lot, we got two cops, police officers that are gonna be rocking the gate and about ten security.
You're proposing here, next to the stage, you said?
Yeah, like little in front of the stage, the right, is when, when entrance will come in, we have a private parking lot, you know?
Okay, so I did deliberately pulling up a map quest because I'm trying to understand the barriers and allocation of this. Now, your stage is directed.
In the bottom part of the parking lot.
Which is towards the service station, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so how do the people enter from the service station to the stage?
They cannot, they're barricaded around the stage.
Okay, so where do they enter?
Only get one enter, entrance to the.
Where, where, where do they enter?
On the right side of the parking lot.
Where? Show me beer tent, where, where are we? Where are, go into where?
You see, you see porta potties?
Okay.
We got main entrance coming in, our private parking lot. Right there, it would be like between the porta potties and the, um, stage on the right side.
Okay, so that is where the cars enter?
And the rest, the rest is locked off, barricaded off.
Okay, so the rest, that's where the cars would enter to come into your.
No, couldn't have cars.
No, but let, let's just realistically, okay, that's where it's gonna be?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, that's where the car. To come in our private park.
Okay, so how, your, your point over there?
Yeah.
Right, people line up over there to come into your venue?
Right.
The street is here?
Yeah.
Where people go in and out to go to the service station here, to come to visit here at the other? Because during your proposed times, your other neighbors are open as well, yeah? So mariachis is open, right?
Yeah, the event starts at nine, so.
Your thing is four to two in the morning?
Yeah, but the event actually will start at nine.
Okay, so why we took four is for what setup?
Yeah, we be setting up, we be setting up. Yeah, we be setting up, we be setting up all all day.
Okay, either way, people put gas over here, so where are they?
Yeah.
Where are they standing in line to get?
They just park in a huge parking lot in the whole premises.
No, tons of parking, I believe that. But where are your three hundred people standing in line to get into your venue is where I'm questioning.
Yeah, tons of parking. So right on the entrance, you have a little, you make a little um opening where the opening is there where they can come inside. So the beginning of the gate ain't gonna be right on the beginning of parking, gonna have a place where they can come in and get wristband or whatever we gotta do, whatever officers or the security gotta do. And and it worked out fine the last event.
Okay, oh, that's why I'm questioning your last event because this isn't your first time doing this, right? But
Yeah.
Isn't that a street here where you're proposing? Okay, so how the oncoming?
Yeah. So. So right here is the street, this is the entrance for our private parking lot.
Yes.
So we making a barricade go right there and in in then the gate right here, so gonna have like maybe about ten fifteen feet inwards before the entrance.
Okay, so you're.
So they can stand all in that area.
O- okay. But there is still oncoming traffic here. Right, this is where you go, this is the this is the gas station here, this is you here, this is right?
No, the gas station is in front also.
Here?
If cars went in the gas station, they they don't um interfere with our parking lot.
Yeah, but I'm talking about your patrons that park here.
Yeah.
Isn't this an exit here? There's I I have two cars right here on the satellite map going in and out right here.
So this is this is state, this will be the gas station.
Yes.
The entrance will come in the 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 um shopping mall is way back here.
Okay, what what is?
So if they went in the gas station, they ain't gonna come our way.
Okay, what is this then I'm looking at? There's two vehicles here. Chalo, look at this Google now. Look at this. Cause these are oncoming vehicles going back and forth on that that road right there. What am I looking at? Right? Okay, this is where you're having a venue, yeah? You see these cars going here?
Oh, yeah.
There's two cars here, right?
The gas station.
It's here. It's here, correct? But this is your own entrance to get in and the back of the service station is here, but I'm talking about these cars here that are coming from here, which is your patrons gonna park. How are they leaving here? Is this road closed? What are you doing with this?
But they they will park out here. They walk right across the street.
But you're you understand my point? This is vehicles passing on your entrance.
Yeah, but they don't park there, walk right across the street. No more vehicle, you walk right in, you walk right in, this is the entrance for the thing.
I I understand what you're saying, Mister Sabala. Do you understand the concern for it's a road?
Yes.
And there's vehicles going in and out?
And when when if vehicles coming across, they park, they don't walk.
Your you.
That's our concern.
No, our our concern is.
Okay.
Your concern, your concern.
You could.
Our concern is you're gonna have three hundred people walking across an open street.
Yes. Not all one time, people come at all.
Yeah, but that's that that doesn't matter. We get a lot, we have we're like number one in the country for pedestrian fatalities. Okay, we just it's on the news like every night of how everybody getting hit by cars, so we want you guys.
And the speed, the speed limit is like.
Excuse me, I'm talking. We don't want you guys putting your patrons in danger.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I understand, but right right here is all speed bump, so the speed limit is like five miles per hour, so.
Is there a crosswalk?
No crosswalk, just speed bumps. All true, all this is all speed bump.
So Mister Sabala, um this, I understand this is your first time appearing on behalf for an extended license.
Yeah.
This, it's not too bad when you do a venue, we know what your your setup is, we understand where it's going. We gotta iron up all the wrinkles from the entire venue. If not, then it continues to be the way it is and you just get an extended premise with no liquor out there at all.
Yeah.
And you don't get an approval. So we gotta go through this. And I understand your urgency to answer us, but you have to also understand the the concerns that we have.
Yes.
Which is you're still responsible for your patrons when they leave your establishment.
Right.
Anything that happens is basically still on your dime, on your time as well.
Because even when even when we ain't gotten away then, the patrons, our restaurant is busy, so the patrons crossing that street all day long anyway, you know what I mean?
Right, but you normally don't have three to five hundred people within your establishment on a normal business day, correct? So your traffic for this.
At one at one time evening, we could have like two hundred people inside and out, you know what I mean?
Okay, so yeah, eh.
That's that one time.
Yeah, but we're including the parking lot as well too now.
Yeah.
Okay, so all these people are parking, all these people are walking to your venue, right? And that's the concern is that we it anytime it's involving a street or anything like that. You're you're blocking it off and then you're you're welcoming, you know, three hundred people, whatever maybe.
We're blocking off our person parking lot.
Yes, I I understand that. I uh let me just recall, you guys go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean our concern is, I mean, you're gonna have people standing in line, they're gonna be standing in that roadway. There no. I'm I understand you're gonna be, they're gonna be waiting to get in, they're gonna be ID'd and whatnot to get in.
When they cross the street.
Right, but say say you have fifty people coming at the same time, what else?
They cross the street, they see the they see the the barrier coming around, but right here
Right.
is the entrance for the thing, you you walk right inside and the the where you where you get banned and stuff like that.
Right.
Is way inside here.
Way inside where?
It's right in, right up here. So the barrier is coming right around and go come in.
So there is a waiting area.
Yeah, this exactly how we did on last time.
But so you're telling, so I mean, your diagram that's provided to us is not really accurate. Cause they're they're.
Yeah.
Your your gates are.
All all we would have to do is make the entrance come in like this and right here, this is where they actually enter, right? On the side of the stage.
So you're saying there is a.
Yeah.
An area.
Yes. Same group thing we did for the last event, but I guess my partner forgot to draw the company.
So I mean, so we need an accurate um map to to for our investigators as well as for us to review. Um and and now your partner is Mister Myers?
Yeah.
Another question while um uh I'm speaking. Uh email was sent back and forth as well as your um application. Um Mister Myers stated there was gonna be one police officer. As well as the investigative report, now your application stated there was two.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna get two now.
You are gonna have two.
This will be more.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Sabala, along those lines, I heard you say ten security officers, is that correct?
Yeah.
Cause the report says eight, so your investigation.
Yeah, but you got one extra, you got one extra officer and couple extra security.
Okay, we just want to be clear how much your security personnel, thank you.
And this is a um all ages event?
No, eighteen and up.
And are they gonna be, are they gonna be banned?
Yes.
And they'll be banned for twenty one and over or both?
Right, twenty one and over.
Okay. Uh motion to convene to executive session, second.
The move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we uh we are back on the official record. Commissioners, are there questions or like a vacuum?
Yes, Chair. Uh motion to approve request number one nine dash one six one two nine with the following conditions. Mister Sabala, um number one is we need a revised floor plan with your entrances and everything that you spoke about. Number two is we're gonna um we're holding you to the ten security and two police attending the event. And a recommendation is that the security um rode the event in and out and on around the crowd, monitoring activities that's happening within the crowd. Number three is we need a post-event report to appear in person no later than thirty days from the from the event to include um number of attendees. Amount of liquor sold and an incident report if there was any incidents, including any ambulance needed to be called, any altercation with H P D, anything that sort.
Question, so the next time they make this event, I just hope liquor be straight out the bar. I I wouldn't have to watch your audience.
This yeah, this is only because you're asking to extend your premises.
Wait, wait, point point about it. You have the right to withdraw this application.
No, no.
I mean, let's not talk about something that's gonna happen down the road.
No, this.
You coming to us asking us to approve it. We approving it, right? To ensure that this is the general public is uh their safety is ensured.
Yeah.
We're placing these restrictions. If these restrictions are overbearing to you, you can just simply walk right out.
No, we we just like trial because we feel the last event we had.
I understand that, but I mean, we're not gonna take the responsibility if somebody gets whacked in the parking lot when one of your one of your um attendees walks out because they're loaded. We're not gonna take that responsibility when we have a chance to cure it right here at this hearing. That's why Vice Chair Gannabon is placing these restrictions on it. If you're not comfortable with the restrictions, you can just walk right out of here. We'll we'll deny your request.
Email us something, all of everything we have done and I'll have my partner email you that, everything we have need after the event.
You you have to write it down now.
Do you have a paper and pen or something that you can write this stuff down?
No.
It's okay.
Yeah, the 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 letter uh indicating the approval will list these conditions.
So this.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so Mister um Mister Sabala, I know that you are just the partners and it seems like Mister Meyer seems to be the mastermind behind it.
No, I'm the I'm the owner, I'm the.
Okay, he was true. Okay, so he tends to have a grasp on what's going on or he came up with this plan and submitted all this stuff. You and him both gotta be on the same page.
Yeah.
And be able to do an appearance before us and be prepared.
Yeah.
As you've heard in the previous cases prior to this, it's not an easy situation. Because alcohol along with any other event or anything happening is a big thing to us. That's what we're here for. So um this this is what you will need to go through moving forward in the event. Every time you extend your license, you go through this.
Yes, you you just trying to dial this stuff in, you know what I mean? So what what you want me to write down again?
The approval letter is gonna state the conditions you want.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
Let me just pull your board right. Understand, this all gonna be done tomorrow. This event is Saturday night, correct?
Right.
Okay. Moving moving forward, when you have other events coming, you should come in a little bit earlier so that we have an opportunity to help you.
Yeah, this is the last.
Clarify things.
So yeah, give me a letter, sending you a letter.
You you could talk to the administration, they will explain everything to you.
You have a motion on the floor?
Yes, move second.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
A matter of I with reservations, I am a bit concerned about this applicant sincerity and ability to comply with the conditions. I hope you do so, sir.
Yeah, plus.
Injection is noted.
Yeah.
Yes, please provide that.
So then give me everything I need from all.
After the ministry.
No, you say uh when you go outside, there'll there'll be somebody to do a decision. Wait, hold on just a minute there, Mister Sabala. Uh okay, agenda item number seven, request number one nine dash one six one two nine is approved with the stipulations and Vice Chair Gannabon's motion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh okay, um agenda item number eight, request number one nine dash one five nine one five from Mister Greg Misio.
Chair, Deputy Chairman, numbers of persons, to my right is James Simpson, the president of the applicant. Greg Misio, that you're assisting the applicant and uh basically this is a request, you know, for reconsideration of the applicant license. Um in a subsequent to the last hearing, we had a meeting with myself, Mister Shinsato, as well as um corporal counsel, Mister Matsumoto. And we discussed with Mister Simpson, you know, the the commission denied the license without any explanation, so we kind of had to explain to them what we thought was the problem and part of it was his attitude. Um and he understands that, you know, this is a process, um and he was frustrated with the process as the application was filed in December of two thousand seventeen and, you know, October eighteen was the first public hearing, which was continued um to January. Um you know, Mister Simpson has put his life savings, you know, into this business and, you know, he squirted away the money while in the army, he did tour tour tours of duty in the Middle East, um one in Afghanistan, one in Iraq, where he directly involved in combat operations against insurgents. And you know, he understands that, you know, compliance with the whole process of reviewing his application is imperative, um be that as it may. What we suggested and Mister Shinsato and I have suggested to him, if the commission does grant the consideration, we'll continue to work with him in his business to ensure that, you know, compliance with all rules and regulations um are done. And we would suggest on our side that perhaps maybe in the reconsideration, if it is granted, that they be put on a six to twelve month probationary period so that they can monitor the activities of this applicant. So finally, we ask that the commission considers denied.
Well, before I open it up, so Mister Misio, uh with your experience, so what has changed since the last time? Where is the hardship on the licensee? And by the way, thank you for your service. We appreciate.
No, basically, Chair, yeah, you know, again, Mister Simpson has put his life savings into this and um, you know, he's basically.
Financial burden?
Financial burden, sir. And um, you know, he's basically broke, I mean, you know, he's put everything into it. And um if there's any concerns with regard to uh perhaps, you know, the individual involved in the violation, I would assure the commission that again, compliance with all rules and regulations of the commission will be adhered to by by assistance. And we will again, we will assist them in monitoring that compliance they they can.
Does any of the commissioners have any um questions for Mister Misio or the um licensee?
Yes, um how did your client come to be the owner of Paisley Metering?
Basically, uh he he would he because he had the money to invest, after the company was established, he purchased the shares of of the company.
And is he now the sole shareholder of the company?
No, he's not. There is uh some two other individuals, not including Mister Paisley. Mister Paisley no longer has any share ownership interest in the co- in the company. There's two other individuals, James, one of the figures.
Yes, um there's a gentleman out of New York, his name is um Patrick. Patrick, he's uh one of our initial investors and a gentleman in California. Um he is also uh one of our investors.
And they own a minority in interest within the company.
The gentleman from New York owns eighteen percent, the other gentleman owns a trivial amount, less than five percent.
And uh you made mention to a Mister Paisley?
Yes.
Uh what is your relationship with Mister Paisley, Mister Simpson?
Um he's a good friend, um but he's not uh someone I'm gonna continue doing business with due to uh the events that obviously happened with his uh ability to comply with liquor commission requirements.
His inability.
Exactly, yes.
Um and do you have any other business interests with Mister Paisley?
I do not, I do not.
Do your other partners have any business interest with Mister Paisley?
No, they were both uh individuals that I knew that um I brought on board earlier.
Um but you are still gonna be carrying the name of Paisley Metering, is that correct?
Um only because it's a recognizable name and Simpson Metering might give the wrong impression due to the T V show.
Um and did you did uh Mister Paisley receive any monetary compensation for the use of the name Paisley Metering?
Uh no, he's um willing to wash his hands with it and pursue other stuff at this point.
When did this all transpire, like this whole shifting of business?
Basically, early last year, uh, wait, late, 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 sorry, late twenty seventeen.
Not actually. I think director, it is like the uh, the series of four, um, yeah, I believe it happened in December of two thousand seventeen.
And were you present during that hearing that that we heard on this license?
Along the original here?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe so.
And you were here through the whole process all the way?
Yes, yes.
You were?
Mister Simpson was present. We were starting with one in October, yes, I wasn't involved in anything before, well, I didn't, I don't think there were any hearings before October.
Right, and you were introduced as well on the dance, you were.
I should have.
Yes, he was a, he was the uh owner, he was present at that time, he's been present since.
Wait, Mister Paisley, at the time when he appeared before?
I don't think Mister Paisley was.
No, no, he was taken off when.
He shouldn't have, right, he shouldn't have been present at all.
Late twenty seventeen.
Yeah, he shouldn't have been present, I'm trying, I don't recall it, but I know that Mister Simpson was present. And then on the um, on the. On the. Public hearing, um, I think what happened was, we went straight into the adjudication into the public hearing and Mister Simpson was in the gallery here, yeah, he was in the gallery. Um, it, you know, it went so fast that Mister Paisley just sat there and. Waiting for it, actually, you know, Mister Simpson, I I told him that too, by the way, Chair, I told him, you know, at that public hearing, he should have performed and sat there and Mister Paisley should have just scrambled at that point. But, you know, just it just happens to them, doing one into the other.
Yep, that is, that is correct, I remember that.
But, yeah, I apologize for that, we just went to the.
That is correct, it was an adjudication prior to the getting of the license.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
But you were partnered with um Mister Paisley at the time, he was. Uh, selling liquor without a license, correct?
Actually, that would be a uh legal interpretation, not a partner, he was an employee at that time. Cause Mister Simpson was the, again, the owner of the company and, you know, he had the majority stake in the company.
So Mister Simpson was the majority shareholder at the time, Mister Paisley and Mister Paisley was an employee.
Right, correct.
Um, so that concerns me even more. Because he was found to be selling alcohol.
Right.
Without a license.
Again, I understand what you're saying.
Was Mister Simpson aware that his employee and his business was selling alcohol without a license?
I think, no, no, but if I could answer that too, like, just in the chair, but, you know, I think he was aware, he was aware that. He was doing the tours, but he weren't aware about selling.
No, no, he was not supposed to be selling alcohol.
So what was your involvement in the business, were you there day to day?
I was more of the money at that point because I was working full time. Uh, I obviously wasn't able to be there during the day, um, but he's since been terminated from the employment, shall we say.
So you you are aware of the yelps and people?
Yes, that's that's what brought to my attention.
And you weren't aware of that at the time of owning the business at all?
Sometimes you put your trust in the wrong individual and it brings.
Motion, yeah, a motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
We can check the all of them, okay?
Aye.
Aye.
If I, I will now. The um. You're now back on the record, commissioners, do you have any further questions or any type of action?
Yes, Chair, uh Mister Michio.
Yes.
Um, since your client is claiming uh or requesting reconsideration. Uh, based on financial hardship, uh, we would like to see evidence of financial hardship. Uh, and I believe Commissioner Michio.
Mister Michio, uh, I think it's important for us, to the extent we are willing and able to reconsider the application. To provide us with a timeline related to the corporation, starting from inception. Would you be able to provide us with a timeline that shows ownership interest from its inception, um, transfers and changes?
Commissioner, we sure to address that, we went over that extensively with the investigator. Yeah, yeah, yes. And I think it should be in a report how, I mean, we we did that, I mean, if you can, you want me to see?
I would even like it through the present.
Yeah, so we did that to present.
If you can double check that, if it's accurate as of the date of the report or the information that you passed on to the investigator, that's fine, but if you could. Verify that information and also carry it forward to the present, but also any resolutions that show any changes in ownership and by whom and what percentage.
Again, that should be in the record and the present ownership should be as last reported to the investigator.
And all I'm asking is if you make sure it's accurate through the present.
I I, in talking to Mister Simpson and working with them, I would assure assure you that it is s- the same as it was. You know, the present is the same as it was, but when you were talking with the investigator.
And we can get into that later, yes.
That being said, uh, my motion is to approve request number one nine dash one five nine one five.
Second motion.
Then move the second, all of them favor.
I vote aye.
I vote Iowa reservations.
Vice Chair Ganabon, I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Okay, Chair votes, uh, in the affirmative. Agenda item number eight, request number one nine dash one five nine one five, our request for reconsideration is granted.
As far as the financial documentation I work with Mister Simpson to get is E S A P to the commission.
Thank you.
It's already been. You've been instructed, you don't come back with the information that uh we have requested then.
We will expect that when folks are here to make your case, so if you want to make a strong case, then please provide.
Okay, if I could, if I could just make one statement for the record, in accordance with H R S two eighty, two eighty one fifty nine C. Once the commission has decided to go forward with a uh reconsideration or rehearing. We have to like provide at least seven days notice, which is why I suggest a two week setting from now, in order to meet that that so. Uh, if okay with the the request or we can set it for two weeks hence. Or at whatever date you wish, but we have to give at least seven days notice of the reconsideration of the the application. So it can be said on the, uh, the earliest it could be said, in other words, would be um. Twenty first?
About the twenty eighth? Mister Michio, it's March twenty eighth, enough time for you folks?
So, exactly, I will try to get that financial information within the weeks, forty eight hours.
Working days, working days, to the commission. Do you need a motion for that, um, Mr. I, or you just going to add?
No, I just would, just needed it for informational purposes, when they said.
Yes, okay, so you need an agenda the item for March twenty eighth.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to uh agenda item number nine. Request number one nine dash one six one one zero from Devon Nakova.
Yes, Chair, due to a conflict on that, you did make something.
Thank you.
Please make that for the record.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair, Commissioners, Devon Nakova, representing Jen Corby. To my right is Chad Cabanlet, C A B A N L E T. He is the G M for the Proridge, Jen. Commissioners?
Mister Nakova, what are you requesting?
We're requesting ninety days special licenses, um, we are in the process, we've actually submitted already, it has been accepted by the liquor commission. So while we are in the process of getting the liquor license um. Done, uh, we'd like the ability to have service at the restaurant. Uh, we already are providing service at the Almirona restaurant, we've had in the two years that we've been doing this, uh, there've been no violations, we haven't been back to see, so. Um, Chad and the the crew know exactly what to do.
Can you're also asking um to utilize current documents on file?
Yes, please.
Can you please? Uh, tell me which documents those are?
Uh, we will be asking to use the um the floor plans, also the personal history and the criminal background check. Um, I will be submitting uh new application, of course, because those are specials, also, of course, the uh special uh application information will be provided as well. Basically. Uh, oh, also, I'm sorry, um, I believe we're s- we're gonna have to provide a new cog because the cog is only good for like thirty days. So I'll be able to provide another one of those, but also um the makeup of the uh the L L C as well. So all the documentation, the lease and stuff like that, excuse me, documents.
Okay, and the personal affidavit and criminal background history that you're requesting to read, we, they are for whom?
Uh, they are for the uh three other individuals who are members of the L L C, uh besides Mister Kim, and I I apologize that I don't have those names off the top of my head. I'm sorry, I should have been there.
Okay, and why are they unable to, um, I I, I'm sorry, we have these on file already?
No, we do not have these on file, I actually uh came to the hearing, uh, I came to a separate hearing, um, to request that we get that information. Waive, uh, Chair, uh Vice Chair Ganabon, actually. We had a quite a discussion uh regarding that, um, she she did have some concerns about it and I understood. Um, I I thanked her very much for that, um, you were very kind to grant us the waiver. Um, so the hard part for us is because the members are on the mainland, trying to track them down and get the information. Um, they were telling me that it was difficult to get, so I had to go off of what they were telling me. Um, and I, the truth is still the same, so.
Mister Nakova.
Yes, ma'am.
I recall what our conversation was, okay, and what was represented to me is not exactly what had happened or what. It's my understanding that it was a little misinterpreted from what you represented. So it was not, it was not the members that you had requested for and um. In that situation, I had asked what were their names or we were not gonna be giving just waivers to John Does or people, we had no idea who they were about.
I understand. Yes.
We're back in the same situation here again, right?
Uh.
Because I don't care where you are, there's people in Japan that get this done.
I understand.
There's no excuse for it and waivers are not the way to go about things and.
I understand.
Based on your reputation, you come forward for waivers like this and it doesn't mean we grant one, we grant all, that's not how it works.
I understand, yes, that's true.
Um, so I would recommend that your clients make it a priority to be, this is part of their business, their money, whatever it is, to make it a priority to get it done.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So, okay, let me, I'm I'm a little confused. You're saying you want to, you want us to, you wanna us to utilize current documents on file. But then we don't have any current documents on file for three individuals, is that correct?
Well, that would include the, I'm sorry, that would also include the waiver that we have, basically, the documents include the waiver that we received.
Okay, so.
In order to.
So we're gonna continue down the line of having three individuals that we have no record of whatsoever. Is that what you're asking us to do?
You do not have the personal history or the.
Criminal background checks for three individuals, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the hardship here is that they can't make the time to do it.
It is what is being represented to me, uh, I I I have to go off of this representing, I I've I've tried to push and I've I've asked them repeatedly. That is what they tell me, I I I apologize.
Do we know, uh, can you tell the commission how much ownership we have in this business?
Mister Kim's father has, I believe. It was nineteen percent, the other two have eight percent each. Um, and Mister Kim, Mister David Kim actually owns everything else. And he is the main day to day guy, the other three have absolutely nothing to do with the business in terms of day to day operations, they have no say in the L L C at all. When the issue first came up, I even actually kind of asked him. Why they are included and I was not given that, I was not given an answer, they just said, this is what we do, and I said, okay.
So are, is it your representation that they are silent partners?
Yes, entirely, they they have absolutely no conduct with the business at all, they have no.
Except for the money, I'm sorry, except for the money.
I'd like that kind of partnership myself too, I'd I'd like to be just getting money.
Yeah, show me the money, follow the money, buddy.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Move the second, all of them favor.
Aye.
The vote aye, we are now in executive session. Okay, thank you, um, we are now back on the official record, Mister.
I thank, I apologize for directing, um, I have the paperwork for the um, the managers and the the members of the L L C. So I just wanted to provide that for you so that it's on the record, because I know that we provided it in the actual application, um, but I wanted to make sure that I got the numbers correct for you.
Oh, point of order, Council, we're ready, we're prepared to vote on this issue.
Is this something that you could have come in earlier?
I I apologize, I was trying to address things, so I didn't wanna be poking through my information while trying to address things, so it's why.
Mister Nakova should have been with this, right, we have this to consider for us today.
That's all you have.
Yes, so.
Okay, so we have this.
I apologize, yes.
All right, are we back on?
Uh, yes, we, okay.
We're good?
Uh huh.
Okay, so, oh.
Uh, let's go go back uh into executive session. I I don't wanna say it, I apologize, yeah, Mister Nakova, this is not the first time. And your responsibility is to provide this commission with all the information that we need to make a prudent decision.
So we're ready to make a move.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, okay, let me go, let me, let me just take the day.
Yeah.
Um, a motion to deny request number one nine dash one six one one zero.
Second.
Move the second, all of them favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, uh, agenda item number nine, request number one nine dash one six one one zero is denied. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, agenda item number ten, uh. El Trace Burro, Doritos. L P D, Mister Manuel Z. Bacalao.
Oh, okay, this is just a first report, oh, okay, first report, yeah.
Let everybody back.
I'm a hot chairs, vice chairs, uh, members of the commission, Emmanuel Z. Bacalao, here on behalf of El Trade Burros, D B A. She. Um, and for the report of six months after the uh closing session.
Okay, how did it go?
Very well, um, we haven't had any violations to date, um, and one of the items I know that was of concern to the commission. Uh, was having people come earlier, start drinking earlier and then drink throughout the day. Uh, what we were able to find is actually when they did start a little earlier, the ones that did come, um, they paced themselves with the same uh amount usually. And so it was a longer period of time with the same amount of alcohol, which which in in our eyes was, you know, beneficial for them. Um, it it wasn't, we'll be honest, it wasn't that much of a a financial gain, but the regulars that did come, um, really enjoyed the opportunity to do so.
Thank you very much, can you hear from law enforcement, please?
Captain Fontaine, Superbag, the investigator for enforcement.
Thank you.
Um, for. The past three months, there's been three inspections conducted of the licensed premises, no new warnings, no violations, no complaints.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No question.
If there's no questions, no action is needed on this, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to uh agenda item number eleven through fourteen.
Uh, motion for the adoption of finding in fact and decision in order for agenda items eleven to fourteen inclusive, second.
Move the second, all of them favor, aye, agenda item, uh, number eleven through fourteen inclusive, the adoption of findings of fact. Decision. Agenda item uh number eleven through fourteen inclusive, the adoption of findings of fact, decision in order are approved. Moving into adjudications.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman. Members of the commission, this is my deputy corporation counsel Monica Chmey on the record for the prosecution in agenda items number fifteen through twenty.
Very good. Let's call agenda item number fifteen, Kailua Lodge, two two three zero. An inevitable protective order of drops of the United States of America, Kailua Lodge. I will disclose for the record that I am a lifetime member of B P O E, Honolulu Lodge six one six. However, that will have no bearing on any decisions that I made here today.
Okay, um, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is uh James Linkner, L I N K N E R. And I'm president and exalted ruler of Kailua Lodge, number twenty two thirty.
Mister, is you wait, do you have the charge?
I understand the charge.
How would you like to plead, sir?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
The move in second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifteen, no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Troy, your recommendation.
This is a first-time violation for selling liquor on an expired license that uh during the process that the licensee was in the renewal phase. But the license wasn't yet issued. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mister Linkner, any comment?
Well. We started off, um, there's no doubt that we didn't have it posted until the third. Uh, we didn't know that we had to pick it up until the second went, but the inspector came in. We thought everything had been done by our secretary. Um, this was one other. She did many things and wasn't disclosing to us. Uh, I asked her in design in September, there were a bunch of issues, but. That's no excuse. I mean, we should have probably followed up with her. So we did write our check April seventeen. We, you received it in May. May twenty first, we received a call saying that paperwork was not complete. So we asked her to work on it. We followed up. She said it was fine. Next thing we knew, we were cited on July second, so we came down to July third. It was unint- unintentional, but um we are guilty. We understand that.
And someone else handling um the paperwork now?
Oh, yes. We've got a very good secretary now. He's very diligent. And as a matter of fact, we are going to move forward with this on April first, when our new officers uh are in force.
So we should not be seeing this issue occur again.
We will never see this again.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
The move in second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifteen, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you, Mister Linkner.
Thank you.
Let me get agenda item number sixteen, Sin Long.
Good afternoon, Mister Chairman, Commissioner Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. To my right is Kevin McDonald. He's an officer and director of the license.
Chair, this is a conference I will repeat.
Thank you.
We waive reading of this charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
Move in second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number sixteen, the no contest plea is accepted.
Miss Troy.
This is a first-time violation for having an open container of alcohol after the hours. It was at two ten A M. that. Uh, beer bottle was found. My recommended fine is uh five hundred dollars plus ten dollars for every minute after closing. So it would be five hundred plus a hundred for a total of six hundred dollars.
Mister Kyuchi.
The beer unfortunately belonged to a member of the band. And I've gone through this with Mister McDonald. He understands. It won't happen again. Um, if it hadn't happened before, it won't happen.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of six hundred dollars, second.
The move in second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number sixteen, recommended fine of six hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Uh, Mister Chair, we could take eighteen while uh Commissioner V. S. I.
Uh, while you are there, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
He's accusing himself of. Okay, so I will take agenda item number eighteen out of order. Club Five O.
Good afternoon again, Mister Chairman, members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. To my right is K. Sato. She's the sole officer and director of the licensee. We waive reading of both charges and our plea of no contest of both charges one and two.
Motion to accept the no contest pleas for charges one and two, second.
Move the second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda number eighteen, charge number one, the no contest plea is accepted. Agenda item number eighteen, charge number two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Miss Troy, what is your recommendation for charges one and two?
For charge one, it's a second violation for an employee consuming liquor on the premises. My recommended fine is a thousand dollars. For charge number two, it's a first-time violation for uh employee not being registered, and my recommended fine is three hundred fifty dollars.
Mister Kyuchi.
Unfortunately, the employee who was drinking on duty and the employee who wasn't registered is the same employee. So I talked to the Sato about that both yesterday and today. She's really, she wants to keep the employee, that's fine, but she's got to talk to the employee, because this cannot continue to happen now. Would also assure the commission, the previous violation was a different employee, but it's okay. You gotta talk to the employees, because this cannot happen. And yeah, it's in the afternoon, but none of that makes any difference. Bottom line, it can't happen.
This, was this employee, uh, what, what position do they hold? Are they a bartender? Are they a server? So this is your bartender?
Relief bartender.
Who is drinking behind the bar?
Yes.
And the previous violation, was that for a bartender as well?
No, it was not. It's a different employee. So, post this. And this is the relief bartender.
So let me just ask a question, Mister Kyuchi, sir. So do you allow your bartenders to drink every night? I mean, got caught once, but is it a, is it their uh privilege to have a drink while they're working? That's, that is all a concern.
No, and I understand the concern. I mean, from what she described to me, this is four o'clock in the afternoon. It's slow, but that's not an excuse. Explainer is not an excuse. The rules apply all hours of the day. It doesn't matter when it occurs. So, and this is the discussion I had with her today, the discussion I had with her yesterday. So the best thing she can do, you know, is how do you prevent this in the future? Talk to the employee.
I will remind the licensee that we do have um the authority to suspend or revoke a license. So I would um stress to your employees that as well.
It can, it can be a lot more severe than that. You understand that.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fines of one thousand dollars for charge one, three hundred fifty dollars for charge two, for a total of one thousand three hundred fifty dollars, second.
Then move the second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eighteen, the recommended fine of uh one thousand three hundred fifty dollars is approved for violation one and two.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then we have back. Okay, so we're going back to fifteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, thank you. Uh, let's call agenda item number seventeen, Misty One.
Hi, Chairman, I'm Commissioner. My name is Christel Bieniaz, K R I S T E L L. Last name V I E N I A S Z. And I am a part owner of Misty One as of two thousand nineteen. Miss Bieniaz, do you wait reading of the charge? Yes.
How would you like to plead? Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
The move in second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number seventeen, the no contest plea is accepted.
Miss Troy, your recommendation.
This is a first-time violation for the obstruction of the liquor commission investigators duties, unplanned inspection or arriving at the premises. While the employee was flickering the lights. To alert the staff, the investigators had arrived.
What is your recommendation?
I'm sorry, my recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
This Bieniaz, this is a very serious violation. Um, were you there that night?
Mm-hmm, you were there.
Were you there or not?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and do you recall what happened?
Um, when. An off from off the clock in four o'clock, I did turn on an entertainment light as they were entering. And I believe it was done in an unfortunate reaction to them.
And this, this um employee, they uh, what, what role do they play in them?
Uh.
Are they a server? Are they a bartender? This is the hostess, and we're asserting that the hostess was off-duty at the time?
Yeah, I don't, I don't. I believe it was on a clock. I just feel like it was a reaction that.
It's a very poor reaction. Have you spoken to this employee about this, about what happened? And what did you say to them?
That. Well, it shouldn't have happened in the first place. It was a mistake. I feel like our relationship with the liquor commission and people who are in the industry, I feel like they have a bad relationship. When, uh, when from when I've met them coming in, I've done my best to have a respectable platform with them and. Um, understand how things work, so I've been trying to just change the relationship because I feel people have fear of them. I just, uh, it shouldn't have happened because it was, it was a mistake.
And what about your other employees? Have you spoken to them about this incident?
They're all aware, but I should readdress it to them.
That when our investigators come, that they should not, um, they should not hinder their investigation or do anything too obstruct.
Now, I just have one question. So let me ask you this. Are your employees intimidated or in fear of the conduct of our investigators when they come into your licensed premises?
I would say I can't fully speak for them, but from what I've learned being there, I feel like they are. Like, the way they can teach me is sometimes of people in the industry, they would teach me to fear them, but when they do come in, I've done my best to. Just be as personable as I can, so I can understand how it all works. So I can't exactly say.
We would like to, at any time, at any of our enforcement people enter your premises.
Mm-hmm.
And you feel that they are not conducting themselves in a proper, courteous, and professional way. We would like to know about that. We do not tolerate that.
Yeah, and I feel that the ones that have visited, it's been okay, but I just, maybe it's the culture over time, the way. Just working with others and talking to other owners, they don't have the best view on the liquor commission. But from so far, I feel like I've just been trained to be respectable and understanding towards them. So that the relationship can kind of change, at least for this business with.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Obviously, there must have been something going on for your employee to hinder our. Our compliance with the li- with the liquor laws. But those people must have thought that something is wrong, that you're going to get a violation.
Yeah, and I don't believe anything was, and I I feel like it was just an unfortunate reaction towards it, and that's, you know.
Remember, unfortunate people have access to all licensed premises. There's only one way that we can find out that you're complying with all of the rules, is to physically send people out there. But while they're out there, we expect them to be conducting themselves in a polite, courteous, and professional manner. If you do have an enforcement officer out there that you feel intimidating on you, we we would definitely like to hear about that.
I'd like to comment on your word, reaction. To me, it's consciousness of doing something wrong. And to me, it's a culture that you're gonna need to change with starting from you and all of your employees, because the reaction should be, come inside. You have nothing to hide. You should police yourself, regulate yourself, and not have your staff, your employees react in a way that suggests there's something behind it.
Um.
So, Miss Troy, would you like to say something? No?
No.
I thought I saw you.
Oh, sorry, no. That being said, uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
Move in second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number seventeen, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
I want to thank you for coming and being candid.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Uh, let's move to skip to agenda item number uh nineteen, um Lounge A Rose, A Vokes.
The licensee requests a continuance until April fourth, which is one week. We just wanted more time because of the number of charges. And I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item nineteen to April fourth, two thousand nineteen, second.
Move in second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, is continued to April fourth, two thousand nineteen. Let's move into uh agenda item number twenty, Kan Zaman.
My name is Yusuf Dakou, uh, part owner of Kan Zaman Restaurant.
Could you spell your name, please?
Uh, Y O U S S E F, family name, D A K R O U B.
Thank you.
Mister Dakou, do you wait reading of the charges?
Yes.
And, um, there are four charges here. Mister Dakou, is your last Dakou? Um, how would you like to plead as to charge one?
No contest, all of them.
For all?
Yeah.
Please call him for the record.
Okay, uh, motion to accept the no contest plea for charge one, second.
Move in second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty, um, no contest plea is accepted for charge number one.
Miss Troy, what is your recommendation for charge one?
For charge number one, it's a first-time violation for not having a manager on active duty on the premises. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Uh, motion to accept the no contest plea for charge two. Second.
Move the second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty, charge number two, no contest plea is accepted.
Miss Troy, charge two.
This is uh technically a second violation for not having a manager on duty on the premises. Uh, on the, on June twentieth, our investigators went out there and they said, we're gonna come back tomorrow and, you know, check on the compliance.
So this was the following day, so therefore it's the second violation.
Yes, and but for adjudication purposes, my recommended fine is five hundred dollars, okay?
Um, motion to accept the no contest plea for charge three, second.
Move the second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty, uh, no contest plea is accepted for charge number three.
Miss Troy.
It's a first-time violation for the failure to have an adequate time card. My recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, motion to accept the no contest plea for charge four, second.
The move in second, all of them in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty, charge number four, no contest plea is accepted.
Miss Troy.
This is a first-time violation for the failure to post the license. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Okay, so we have here one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars in total in recommendations, Miss Troy, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mister Dakou, what happened?
Uh, we were having uh issues with the management, uh, owners, uh, partners. Uh, we were having, uh, issues with the management, uh, owners, uh, partners. Uh, that start the beginning of two thousand eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
At this part of this, and we shut down the whole operation, two restaurant and catering company.
When did you do that?
Uh, August, end of August.
Okay. So, it, when these violations occurred, you folks were in upheaval?
Yeah, but we were in mess, uh, with the management and the owners. This was the part of why this one of, and other twenty things we had. We shut down, and we closed Chinatown, Chinmooki and Catering Company.
And you, you closed that in August of two thousand eighteen? Are you folks back in business now?
No, we aren't.
So you've been closed since August of two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
Do you have any other businesses? Are you, um?
Down employee for, on bottom, I do over.
So you're not, you don't operate or own any other restaurant establishments?
No, no, we, no, nothing. I work for a company. Does it panic to reopen the restaurant? No.
Um, seeing as that you folks are no longer in business and, um. Have not been operating for, since last year, um, motion to issue a letter of reprimand. Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty, a letter of reprimand will be issued.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item number twenty-one, the legislative update, we all know, tomorrow's crossover day.
Today is crossover, it went down to fourteen, yay.
Yeah, I saw that, all good news, all good news. Uh, does anybody have any administrative matters on agenda item number twenty-two? None? Meeting is adjourned.